Would please stand with me for the pledge allegiance. Commissioner Hott, would you please?
Pledge allegiance to the United States, our banner, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain's not here. Mr. Clark, would you mind praying for us, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for coming for you this evening, doing the business of Hampshire County. We ask for your guidance and your direction and all that's said and done, and we pray that everything is done to be in your honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've done that.
I just do. I stood up.
Well, your mind's on a lot of different things sometimes. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. The commissioners received a digital copy of the minutes. Gentlemen, like a minute to read, or if you have read them already digitally, if you'd like to move to approve those, I'd accept a motion.
I'll move that we approve those as presented.
I'll second that motion.
A motion in a second to approve the previous meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to presidents and commissioners reports. I had quite a lot going on. First, I'll go over our planning commission meeting, the main item of which was our fairground road issue with the illegal salvage yard, which is at the prosecutor's office. We're awaiting a briefing on what her office is, plans to do with that. We have deemed it a common nuisance, so now it's out of the planning commissioner's hands and at the prosecutor's office. The other thing is, we went over our ordinance survey and talked a little bit about, we had open forum, some members of the public and delegate Thorne came out and spoke with their opinions and questions on the solar issue. And I've also done some extensive research. You know, I do see that there's a large push from certain areas, especially those affected that live around these solar farms, or the one in Augusta, rather, and that fear potential solar farms around the substations in the county. And the big thing that Mr. Rocken had brought up, and that I had thought about myself, and even Commissioner Hott, was had anybody ever looked up, you know, the substation layout in our county to see where the most viable parcels would be? Because we know that that's generally their mode of operation, is to try to go where it's easiest to input that power and not have to pay for that infrastructure themselves. And I spoke to a Mr. Landis, who's the chief electrical engineer for Potomac Edison, and we have six substations: Springfield, Romney, Cape and Bridge, Ebenezer, Hampshire, and the one on, obviously, where the solar farm in Augusta is. And of those, the one in Junction is really the only viable substation in which it has contiguous parcels that would be conducive to another solar farm in an immediate timeline. So, you know, not that we want to say, well, just because there's only that one substation now that we shouldn't be preparing ourselves for the future. And that doesn't mean that a solar outfit wouldn't want to pay for their own substation or infrastructure and take on that extra cost. But I just thought that that would be valuable research to the county, the planning commissioners, and the taxpayers, to know where the substations are, because that's generally their mode of operation, is to go where it's cheapest for them to input their power and make money the quickest. And I also had found on the Public Service Commission's website that, and it's on the Secretary of State's website, their subsection clearly states that there are different areas that will allow the Public Service Commission authority to deny these solar sighting certificates, for lack of a better way of explaining it. And it clear, one of the subsections clearly states that if any of these solar farms are contrary to public interest, that, you know, that would be grounds for them to not approve a solar sighting certificate. So, Delegate Thorne actually helped me research that. So, we're looking into other avenues to fight these things. And I did also see in there that when they do issue a solar sighting certificate, there's two ways that the state collects fees from these, and it's a $40,000 flat fee, and then there's a per-megawatt fee. So, either/or, the lesser of the two. So, states collecting huge fees from these solar sighting certificates, but it can also be filed at the Public Service Commission level, from my current research. Now, I'm challenging our planning commissioners and attorneys to look into this as well, but, you know, that may be another avenue in which the public can share their concerns and stop these before they're issued a solar sighting certificate. And then we're also, I don't have an update. We're due to meet with the planning commission subcommittee and Mr. Gay this week, actually. So, I'll have a further update for the commission at our next meeting. And I also want to be very clear that there's been a lot of comments that we could just hastily make an ordinance in order to issue more to him. That is not the case. If you read Chapter 8 of the code, if the planning commission is going to recommend a zoning ordinance to the county commission, you must have a proper study. And then it states, yet again, right at the bottom of the code, Chapter 8, that no ordinance can be created without a proper study. And that is what we're doing, and that's what you must do first before you can have a zoning ordinance, and that, if we choose to do that. So, we're following through with the study to, just to get a pulse on the county. And the other thing I'd like to reiterate is, there's a lot of taxpayers that are concerned that surveys aren't as comprehensive as they ought to be when trying to make a big decision like this. And we, obviously, we do know that, that the survey is just one facet of the study. There will be town halls, and the survey is just one part of the study. That won't be what the entire decision for recommendation is made upon. Moving on here, gentlemen, $11,354 in permit fees, and we had a $3.76 million month, last month, in construction in the county. Also, this group of concerned citizens is going to have a sort of a presentation, town hall-style meeting at the auditorium, June 2nd, at 2:00, and that'd be the Hampshire High Auditorium, if anybody's interested in hearing what Mr. Haynes and some other individuals have to say. Mr. Haynes is a retired scientist and not a lobbyist. I did research that. I know that there's been conflicting statements made. I did just point-blank ask him, and he told me he's not a lobbyist, because I was certainly concerned about that. Moving on, I did have a development authority meeting as well, just mainly standard operating business. We talked about our strategic plan for the property when it switches hands between the school board and the development authority. It's supposed to be a clean slate for a clean slate, but there's a basketball court there that I think the Town Parks and Rec are, perhaps, the county's interested in. So, we're trying to work together for a strategic plan for that parcel. In September, we moved to the West Virginia deaf and blind from Taggart Hall, which was a move that I endorsed. I mean, it's going to save a great deal of rent money. So, other than that, I did take a phone call from the chief of Slainsville Fire. We talked about the allocations we made for the fire companies. He had expressed some concern about not having water, oh, water safety gear, if you will. He needed some ropes and things. And as far as the rest of my business and phone calls, I'm going to, we're going to be going into it in the agenda, so I'll cut it a little short. Commissioner Agnew, did you have a report today, sir?
I do. Thank you. I will start with the report from the Committee on Aging. I attended that meeting this past week. They have completed their kitchen renovations at the Romney Senior Center location here in town, and they are very pleased with the outcome. Meals are being served again at the Romney location. And when we met, we actually met down there to look at it, and they were actively serving meals that day. So, I can say that although it took a while, it turned out to be what they needed and are very grateful to the commission for the help financially there. And they extended a big thanks also to the Romney Volunteer Fire Company for the use of their kitchen during the downtime for those renovations. Financials were reviewed at that meeting, and Hampshire County Committee on Aging financial status is solid, I would say. They have been able to recently give their employees raises. And for the public, the, you know, the Committee on Aging is primarily state-funded, however, such as the kitchen renovations and the building itself. The county works with them as well. Convention and Visitors Bureau also attended that meeting. The CVB met last week in Cape and Bridge, and I'd say the CVB is on an upswing. The amount of revenue to advertise and showcase Hampshire County and the various different ways that they do it is holding steady or increasing. One topic of discussion during that meeting was the need for the Airbnb-type companies to be more detailed in their efforts with property owners to explain the amounts and percentages taken out for hotel-motel tax responsibilities to our counties and towns across the state. What these companies tend to do, you know, they contract with the landowner, the homeowner, whatever, to advertise their Airbnb, but then they, you know, tell the counties that it's personal information, so they won't give an exact amount to an exact Airbnb, or, and I don't want to pick on just Airbnb. There's other avenues that do the same type of thing. But this is something we might have to ask our legislatures to take a look at, because this information is needed for our treasurer's offices across the state to do this kind of business, obviously. So, that was one item that was discussed at length. But the CVB is also gearing up for their annual farm crawl, which continues to grow in size and popularity here in the county. And this is where the farms across the county open up for tours to the public. Some of our farms, obviously, are normally open to the public anyway, others are not. But this is a chance for people to see inside and learn about the, at least about the participating farms in the farm crawl. So, they're gearing up for that. Parks and Recreation meeting, also, short report there. New director, Nick Carroll, he continues to work with the board members to adjust into his new position since the retirement of Mr. Larry C. And they've also hired a new assistant, as they lost their previous assistant and Mr. C. there at about the same time. And her name is Brittany Nelson. So, as you talk to Hampshire County Parks and Recreation, you may hear some new voices, and you'll be working with some new folks, because I know a lot of folks in our county call Parks and Rec and work with Parks and Rec in different ways. So, we got some new folks in there, and it's doing well. There are some immediate plans to look at different, our different rental opportunities within Parks and Rec and our buildings, and make some improvements to the rental reservation applications, mainly for clarity reasons when signing up. So, that was discussed. I want to spend the remainder of my report time, commissioner's report time, addressing a so-called opinion column that was written by an employee of our Hampshire County Review, Sidney Mauer. It appeared in the May 15th issue of our Hampshire Review. And the reason I bring this to the table is because the column heavily involved the Hampshire County Commission and the salary enhancement funds sent down to the counties to enhance the pay of paid personnel in EMS. And I know after I address this in detail, the paper will just claim, well, it's our opinion column. And that's okay. An opinion is fine. But an opinion laced with false information meant to mislead the public to support that very opinion is something very different. This column is not just an editorial, and we have all read those. And you can take it or leave it, and even laugh at some of the undereducated and non-researched statements that appear there. But this is official facts and opinion page that is written by employees of your local paper. So, one would think there would be some responsibility for accountability required here. But what'll really be interesting to me is after I give some of the facts about this so-called opinion column, is whether that will make the paper. So, I'd address this directly and to the point, because as one of your elected officials who manages and administers your tax dollars, I owe this to our citizens of Hampshire County. While Mrs. Mauer's opinion column may state her dissatisfaction with the decisions of the commission to administer and address different challenges with EMS in our county, it also drastically misleads the reader with false information concerning the salary enhancement bill. So, I'm going to just get right to it. Number one, she insinuates that paid EMS salaries were not enhanced by the salary enhancement fund sent to the counties by the state. Paid personnel salaries were enhanced, and we have record that this request submitted to the commission by Hampshire County ESA during the meeting she spoke of, and a motion was made and passed unanimously to fund $1 an hour raise to our day shift employees and a $2 an hour raise to our night shift employees. I have that request right here, and it's the original, because you can see where Mr. Malcolm took notes up in the corner. He said, "We currently have 12 field employees in a 24-hour period. This equates to 12 times 24 times 365 days per year for 105,120 hours per year. This is a dollar-an-hour salary increase that we put in place. We have 5 times 12 times 365 per year, 21,900 hours per year for the night shift, $2 an hour salary shift differential." The dollar-an-hour raise equated to 105,120. The $2 an hour raise equated to $43,800, for a total of 148,920. The commission approved $125,580, and I can't read the cents there. But, so, yes, they did give part of that salary enhancement fund for, indeed, salary enhancement. Mrs. Mauer says, "No, no, we didn't." That being said, there is a portion of that that's still left, and the commissioners are currently working on what they will do with that, as there's a, if you read the bill, and it's Senate Bill 737, by the way, if you want to look it up, because it does over and over and over again explain that it's for paid personnel. So, as you can see, that raise amounted to $148,920. She speaks of a deficit. Well, much of the deficit was incurred by the raise itself, which the commissioners have funded a raise, just like they were asked to do through the salary enhancement fund. Another claim is that the administrative rules require the county to divide the funds equally among all ambulance companies serving the county, including the salary enhancement for paid volunteers. So, folks, I got to stop right there and say, when in Hampshire County has there ever been salary enhancement funds to paid volunteers? Saying those words in the same sentence has to raise an eyebrow of any of the three administrators here divvying out the people's tax dollars. And again, this bill is Senate Bill 737, passed in 2023. It is very specific that these dollars only be used for salary enhancement. Also, Code 6, West Virginia Code 16-4C-25A, quoted in a letter from West Virginia OEMS themselves, states that these funds are only for salary enhancement. As far as I know, this county is under the impression that our volunteers were true volunteers, which is people donating their time for the good of the community. Maybe, you know, according to Mrs. Mauer, that here in Hampshire County, we need to look at what defines a volunteer. So, even as one commissioner, I was confident in our commission's decision, but I still double and triple-checked with the director of West Virginia OEMS and the state legislatures, who either helped write or passed this bill. And while so-called paid volunteers are eligible for these funds, your county commission is not obligated to give these funds to paid volunteers and can't be disqualified or accused of misuse of funds, as Ms. Mauer did. So, to my knowledge, the Hampshire County Commission has never received any formal financial statement from any so-called volunteer agency explaining to us who in their entities get paid, who doesn't, how much they get paid, and for what. Actually, the county has requested this kind of information in the past, especially when originally designing a way to fix our EMS problems seven to 10 years ago. What we got from most, but not all, of the entities was pretty much the sound of crickets. So, this not only brings to light, ladies and gentlemen, some of the disinformation that your local paper is feeding you, but it also brings to light some of the depth to the conversation that persists here in Hampshire County about paid versus volunteer. What is a volunteer, really? What entities are truly volunteer? Which ones are not? Don't we owe it to our taxpaying citizens who fund these bills a clear explanation of this, if we were to even consider salary enhancement funds to a volunteer? Not to mention how unfair it would be to a volunteer entity that is truly still all volunteer. They wouldn't be eligible for any of these funds, which would actually punish them for truly volunteering. Would I consider other funds for volunteers EMS entities, and have I supported them in the past? Yes, I have, and yes, I would. Will I consider a vote to support salary enhancement for volunteers under the current circumstances? No, not without some explanation to the public citizens, taxpayers, as to whom, how much, when, and what for. The commission can't simply hand over funds to agencies promoting themselves as volunteers for salary enhancement, especially without a detailed explanation as to how the public, so the public can see how these funds would be used. I wouldn't want to be audited on that kind of handover from the commission. And I don't think my voters, at least, would like me doing that. The last thing I want to say is, I just ask Hampshire County, we get eight or nine people here, at the most, and a few on the YouTube, but take a closer look at the big picture on this whole EMS saga, and you might begin to get a better understanding of how your commissioners have been made out to be the EMS villains by those opposed to the hard decisions that we have to make. That's all I got, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The other thing I'd like to add is that there was some information written that July 1 was the deadline. So, I reached out directly to the source, Jody Ratliff, the director of West Virginia OEMS, who said that that is not the deadline, that is a reporting date, and we're to report quarterly on the funds. The first quarter couldn't be reported because the funds hadn't been allocated. The deadline to, for these funds is December 1. So, every time that we are four to six, eight months ahead of a deadline, or we're going to be berated in the paper because we haven't made a decision yet, because we're still working on it, we haven't done it fast enough for that certain correspondent, you know, I didn't appreciate that. And I did want to relay on the other $18,000. The way that it was explained to me is that it would be a regulatory body for mental health, and there was no deadline on those funds. They want to encourage us, our volunteer chiefs and our director of county EMS, to work together to solve the mental health crisis in EMS. We know there's been some serious instances with individuals who've had major mental health issues from this job. It's a very tough job. And we, and I spoke to Commissioner Hott, it's his board, and he absolutely is working with TAD. And I've spoke with Chief Smith. I've spoke with several individuals, and we're working towards a solution on, she says, a crisis response team, and it seemed to be correlated to the deficit of HCESA. And it just, it seemed very convoluted. So, I want to be very clear, there's no deadline on the $18,000 approximate sum, and that is for mental health, a regulatory body, a crisis response team. And July 1 is not the deadline. That's just a reporting date, a quarterly reporting date. Commissioner Hott, did you have any report today, sir?
Oh, not much. First of all, to relate to what you, both you gentlemen are talking about, I know as a commission, that this commission hasn't done anything wrong. I also know that I'll go to court any day if I have to, if anybody wants to take us to court. We've done nothing wrong. I don't pay a whole lot of attention to the review, and especially to Sidney. In my opinion, she's, Sidney hasn't got a report right since she's been on the review. She's had people in this room that were dead, so I don't even read her articles, so I don't worry about that. However, I do appreciate you gentlemen going back and doing some research on this. But I- But I wasn't concerned, and I'm still not concerned about what we've done or how we've done it. There's this commission, since I've been on here, to my knowledge, has never broken a law, never done anything illegal, and I'll, like I said, I'll go to court anytime I have to 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 justify that. Other than that, I attended Region 8 meeting way back, I don't know when when we had our last meeting here in in April. Yeah, anyway, I attended a region meeting, and the only thing there we done was we appointed a nominating committee, and we had an exit, we had an audit report from PB Mayor's who done the audit for Region 8, and everything was fine with the with all of the Region 8 financial statements. I attended a PSD meeting where mainly we just had updates on the Perkinsville project and and the Slainsville water project. They're they're getting close. I don't know exactly how far they're on Slainsville, how far they are out on 29 meter. They've they've they're going a long ways out there. I think they're getting close maybe to Wood Road, maybe Darren may know whether maybe.
They're on Lantrix.
Okay. The last time I checked, I think it was there. But anyway, they're they're moving right along with that project, and the Perkinsville project's been moving along too. It's it's had some little, it's had some glitches, which we always anticipate. I did the farm land protection meeting where we just went over some of the applications that we've submitted to the state for for the easements. I attended a 911 meeting last last Wednesday, I think, and one of the things come out of that meeting, we talked about, and they would like maybe to see the commission look at it or next to their next budget or include it in the budget. If you gentlemen recall back, I think it was a couple of months ago or three months ago, we had that fire out at the crossings where we had, we had people there from Western County, Maryland, and all over. I forget how many fire companies were there. Well, we had a failure at the K Haven Tower, and the generator went out, and of course, we was able to after that, we, matter of fact, we stepped up and got the got the generator up there and got got everything working. But the 911 committee was was is maybe going to recommend or ask that the commission put in their budgets some kind of a contingency fund for for any kind of hazard like that 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 we might have where we would have to 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 get a generator or repair the tower, the radios, without we'd have that funding right there, we wouldn't have to worry about where we got it from. So that's that's something I think that they may may recommend to us or you gentlemen maybe for next year, because I don't, I don't think I'm going to be sitting up here when the next budget. Other than that, and I've had some of the same conversations with with as you guys have with the with the solar panels, and I've reiterated to people that I really don't feel their county is going to be inundated with with solar panels. Having said that, I don't like them. I don't like to look at them. I don't, I wouldn't want them next to me, but I also, it's it's in my heart that I I can't tell somebody what to do with the property. I have, I have trouble doing that. So as far as permitting goes, I think we might be able to do some different type permitting to before they before they get their permits. But other than that, that's just, that's just my thought on it. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I know we're behind, and I'm going to go ahead and beat a dead horse a little bit. I did also want to mention that she she had, Mrs. Mauer, had had stated in there that I had privately promised, which that private conversation was with Chief Smith, who is sitting here, and the quote, there was a quotation of make it right, and and I absolutely said, I'll investigate the claims and information that I've learned, and if I find out that I as a commissioner or this commissioner is wrong, I would do everything I can to make it right. Moving on to the next agenda item here, and and I also want to reiterate that I that I will support volunteer EMS, and I don't have any qualms at all with Commissioners, Commissioner Eglinger's request to show the taxpayers the books and different things. If that means that I'll gain the support to help funding, I'm working with Chief to look at the call volume and Jody Ratliff to see what Romney, Augusta, that have paid volunteers, what portion of the call volume was theirs, and but yeah, moving on, moving on. The the other item was, I wanted to be clear that with all of the options that I've looked at for solar farms, there's, there's nothing that I've found in current law that will totally kick solar outfits out of this county altogether. They can be regulated, you know, you can issue a moratorium, which we've seen them beat. Zoning only tells them where in the county in which they can do it, and adjusting your land development ordinance establishes processes and fees. There's still this misconception that the county commission has the authority to just kick them out of the county with or without zoning. I haven't found that to be true. Anyways, bid opening for roof replacement on Old Cape and Bridge Middle School.
Gentlemen, good evening. What I'd ask contractors to do with the Cape and Bridge Community Complex is to break out their proposal on the, I'll call it the old school portion of that complete structure, and the gymnasium, and a small portion of that, and then with the total of the whole. This is something I was given direction to do by Mr. Rinker, Archway Recreation Board.
Would you reiterate what you said this would be? This is for A, B, C, D, and E. This is for all roofs?
E, and then items F and G are the gymnasium and a little short east end of the gymnasium that had a flat roof. I'll call it over the locker room, so to speak.
Okay.
F and G. The A, B, C, D, and E portion of it is the older part of the building, and it's in the most urgent. It has leaks in it throughout. Right now, the gymnasium, even though it's got a lot of years on it, it doesn't appear to be leaking at this time.
These are two separate sums for they both? Ross, were these roofs detailed in your CDS request?
Yeah, I didn't get exact full, but we, we, I think we put 200,000 for the roof.
Any update on that?
It made it through Senator Caputo's office, both those projects, so they're heading up to.
Committee?
I haven't had a chance to talk to him out of Senator Manchin's office, I tried reaching him the other day.
Thank you.
So I don't know the status on Senator Manchin's decision, whether or not our projects.
Okay, thank you. Did they put a deadline on these quotes, Mr. Hott?
I think they were good for 60 days.
A, B, C, D. Yeah, they got them broke apart a little different, so we need to lump them together, or this one's got.
I don't think it's going to make a much difference.
No.
That's the other one. And then his, his other bid out here, he's, he's more on there. Did Rob just say that we had up to?
Well, we have the tribal, tribal consistency fund, but there's only 100.
100 in there.
100 in there. It's that there's the tribal consistency fund that has 100,000, but the CDS is, they haven't decided on, so. What did you say was the more pressing of the?
A, B, C, D, and E is the more pressing.
A, B, C, D?
And E.
And E. So E allowed for E, it's allowed for A, B, A through D.
One of the bids, Mr. Hott, separates out A, B, C, D, and E, and the other one only does A, B, C, D. But that's their their question there is, I guess we have to figure out how to add E to the.
How did, how did, how did you tell them to do it? A, B, C, D, and then E, F, and G?
A, B, C, D, and E is one lump, and then F and G as the second.
Can you? We need to know what Blackstone is charging for E specifically. Do you have his contact information?
Yeah, I can call him.
Call him, please, yes. Here, Matt. Because that's the hinge. I certainly don't think we can do all of them.
Mr. President, I move we go ahead and table this so that that.
I can get the answer for you.
Mr. Hott can get us something definitive on that tabled until he, before we make the final announcement as to the bid.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to table the roof replacement for the Old Cape and Bridge Junior High, Cape and Bridge Community Complex. All this favor signifies by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Treatment Court Month proclamation.
We've already approved it, I think.
Yes, sir. Yes, so.
Authorized you to do it. Do you have to sign it?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
We all signed it.
We, yeah. So I'll quickly here read the Hampshire County Commission proclamation. To recognize and celebrate the success of the South Branch Adult Treatment Court and treatment courts throughout West Virginia and the United States, and leading people with substance use disorder into lives of recovery, stability, health, and success, the county commissioners of Hampshire County, West Virginia proclaim the month of May 2024 as Treatment Court Month, whereas the first adult treatment court in West Virginia opened in 2005, and the Eastern Panhandle 22nd Judicial Circuit Drug Court, now known as the South Branch Adult Treatment Court, accepted its first participant in 2011. Since 2005, much has been accomplished at both state and local levels with regard to how our society and government handle criminal cases linked to substance use and mental health disorders. Treatment courts are the cornerstone of the justice reform sweeping our state and the nation. There are currently 30 adult treatment courts in operation in the state of West Virginia, and whereas adult treatment courts are designed with the purpose of reducing recidivism and substance use among offenders, the goal is to increase the likelihood of successful rehabilitation through early, continuous, and intense treatment, mandatory periodic drug and alcohol testing, implementation of appropriate sanctions and incentives in rehabilitation services, all of which are supervised by a judicial officer while the participant participant faces life on life's terms in the real world. Treatment courts providing some of the most successful interventions in our nation's history for leading people with the substance use and mental health disorders out of the justice system and into lives as healthy and productive members of society. Treatment courts annually refer more than 150,000 people nationwide to lifesaving treatment and recovery support services, and whereas the South Branch Adult Treatment Court has been serving the citizens of Hampshire, Hardy, and Pendleton Counties since 2011, in its more than 13 years of service to the local community, the South Branch Adult Treatment Court has accepted 262 individuals into the program, with 118 individuals successfully completing the program, reflecting a 46.8% success rate. The recidivism rate for the individuals who have successfully completed the South Branch Adult Treatment Program is 6.7%, considerably lower than the state rate for Treatment Court graduates, which is 16%. The state recidivism rate for all other individuals who have not participated in a Treatment Court and or have not successfully completed a Treatment Court is 29.3%. Whereas while participating in the South Branch Adult Treatment Court, 23 individuals have completed their GED, TASC, or high school equivalency. 28 drug-free babies have been born, and whereas community service and service to others is a key component of the program, and participants are given many opportunities to develop and foster this component. The current participants in the program have allowed, have already performed over 5,700 hours of community service, which calculated the minimum wage rate is equivalent to $50,561.86. Since the beginning of the South Branch Adult Treatment Court, it is estimated that more than $1 million worth of community service has been provided to our community. Whereas in 2023, participants in adult treatment courts in West Virginia cost the state $5,453 per person compared to a cost of $19,425 per person in the regional jail and $26,081 per person in prison, which is a cost savings savings of $18,881.33 to $20,627 per person. And therefore, be it resolved that the county commissioners of Hampshire County in recognition of the significant importance, service to the community, and outstanding accomplishments of the South Branch Adult Treatment Court and treatment courts throughout the state and the nation hereby declare that the Treatment Court Month be established in the month of May. And thank you to Judge Carl for their successes, and and the other circuit court judges, Judge Williams and predecessor of them, Judge Cookman, for their success in this program. Gentlemen, you've already authorized me to sign. Thank you. And moving on to CBB ARPA funds allocations for trails. Ms. Lat, Ms. Tina? How are you today? Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about the trails. I think it's been two years since we appeared before the county commission to request funding. When we began exploring trail development, our primary goal was to create accessible trails that encourage local engagement and support. We started with smaller trails in Romney and Cape and Bridge that were existing. We identified Camp Walker and Augusta as a potential site due to its central location. These projects were designed to get the local community walking and using the trails, fostering a sense of ownership and support for larger projects. I recently dropped off those signed contracts to the county. I recently dropped off those signed contracts to the county grant writer and sent them to the Mills Group. Initially, we had partnered with Downstream Strategies, but we encountered hidden fees, excuse me, that were not sustainable for our budget. As a result, each new contract with the Mills Group specifies a cap of fifteen thousand dollars, and that was done to ensure transparency and budget control. Once the, once the downstream strategies fell through, we just kinda got off track and didn't pick it up again until we were notified, hey, it's time to move, you gotta do something. So the new contracts means a total of forty-five thousand for the project, which is fifteen thousand under the original requests. The contracts were lumped together initially to save money, but they cover three separate trail projects. Were able to, we were able to save money by choosing a firm that doesn't require the plans to be bundled under one contract. And the reason that I am here is because, I guess we have several options moving forward, although, like I said, I've signed those and forwarded them on. I guess the question is whether we need to revisit all of this and approve it again, or? And maybe Rolf can shed light if there are any questions, but, um, I guess there's questions as to.
Yeah, I got, I got a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first of all, they, they addressed, they got Mr. Mance on here, what, what's happened with that?
That's because Mr. Mance was involved in the, a couple of years ago, he approached me, we were, he had also attended some trail conferences. I've been friends with him, he has Bent River Trading and Cape and Bridge, he has the wedding venue over in, um, in Greenspring, so he stepped up and offered, and I was happy to have the, the assistance.
But all these are, uh, they're all from the same, same group.
Correct.
And, and the, the, the project, quite frankly, the project was supposed to be completed in a hundred and twenty days, and it's been two years. The other thing is, this, this don't, this don't look good to me, the way we've done this. Did you, did you put this out for bids at all?
No.
So this way, we're, we're standing under, we're standing under the threshold so that we don't have to put it out for bids, and, and that don't look good to me. The, the other thing, um, you, you didn't advertise, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, uh, I just, I, I just have some trouble with this. The other thing is, is, is the Camp Walker. I think we have nine acres out there, and there's, there's already some trails in there. They do this, what are they, what's that thing they do out there with the golf? This golf, with those trails out there, and I, I'd have some, well, I'd have some concerns about that one altogether. The other two, I'm not necessarily having any concerns about, but in, in reading this, I, uh, I don't, have you gentlemen read these?
Yeah.
Have you read them, uh, Mr. These?
The, the three separate proposals.
They're all the same. I mean, they're all worded the same.
Yeah, yeah, and I've, and I've read the background information that Tina alerted us to prior. So, you know, I, I'll agree, Commissioner Hott, the, something to this caliber will have to be put out for bids. I think that's, uh, and I mean, that's, that's just straight up, it's, we, we got, we need to put this out for bids. As far as the, the projects themselves, uh, you know, our intent for the CVB walking trails money out of ARP, you know, I, I think they, they fall within that. And, you know, they, they do have that, that time deadline to complete this. So on, on that part, I would say they're okay, but it's, to me, it looks like it's gotta be bid out.
Well, even the project, when, when they submitted the, the project, it said in there to be one bid. I mean, the project, when you put that in, you had one bid in there instead of, we have three different ones.
Right, that original company, yes, that, those were bundled together. Yes, you're correct. Yeah.
Yep, I see what your gentleman, what your gentleman is saying. If it was three separate allocations out of ARP for three separate projects, but we, when we allocated that, did we do just one? We, it was just one for sixty or seventy thousand?
I guess so.
Sixty, sixty, yes.
That, yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, I certainly want to support this initiative. I supported the ARP allocation. Yeah.
What do you, what do you gentlemen think about the, the Camp Walker one? I mean, and, and I think maybe you guys had talked to, did you, did you at one time talk to Parks and Recs about the Camp Walker one?
I actually just did today.
Okay.
And, and I have one, one more question real quick. Is it an option to reallocate the funds to those individual organizations? Like to reallocate to Hampshire County Parks and Rec, to the town of Romney, to Fort Edwards Foundation, where those trails are at? Where they're located?
I, I don't, see Tina, then they would have to come, they would have to do all of this. Uh, I mean, I, I liked, originally, I liked your idea. I didn't have any trouble with the idea.
Yeah, and the proposal is, it's just, it's for, um, it's for plans. It's not for any work to be done on the trails. It's, it's part of a, like a toolkit, if you will, that they would need to then get grants for, uh, for the trail work themselves. So we could help them, we, the CVB could help them apply for grants, but then it's gonna be up to each entity to, to do what needs to be done. And, and yes, I did talk to Parks and Rec today, um, so that sounds like there may be, um, a different issue going on there, but.
Well, I, I just, what I would have trouble with was, would be that the, the CVB or somebody else going in and doing something maybe contrary to what Parks and Recs, and I'm not, I'm not saying that you would, but I, I think we ought to get that.
Well, we would just hand those plans over to the entity for them to do, but, but all of this, we want to make sure, like, we don't want to do anything wrong. We want to make sure everything's right.
In, in reading this thing, it's like a damn cut and paste. I mean, it's just, I, I, when, when you guys read this, am I, am I right about that or wrong? I mean, it, it just, there's just so much. There's a lot of, there's a lot of wording in there, verbiage or something that is just, I don't know.
Well, and I don't think it, it matters, Commissioner Hott, because I, I don't think I would vote to approve three separate. Cause it looks like you're piecing it out, is what it looks like, and, you know, I've, I've talked, well, with the clerk about that before, as far as ethics goes and so forth, and you're not supposed to do it that way. So, you know, I mean, I don't think that was intentional, but it's certainly the way it looks there. You know, we, we allocated sixty thousand. To, to answer Tina's question, could it be reallocated? I mean, I think that's a, uh, something we would want to double check with Rolf on. Certainly at the end, when there's money left over from all the different things, we're gonna be reallocating some probably for other projects. So I, my guess is that would be possible, um, but I, you know, if Rolf wants to speak on that, uh, he's, he's our, our man that looks that stuff up for us.
Two minutes, Rolf.
Two and a.
I'm gonna do it in one, and then you can figure it out, you can figure it out.
If you can do it in one, I guarantee you one thing.
All right, one minute.
I'm just kidding.
We're, uh.
I love you.
The, the, the barn has already been opened, and the door is out, and everything's out. These have been signed and sent back to Mills. So they already think they have signed contracts from this, this county.
Well, that shouldn't have never happened. I mean, this, this thing was sent to Mr. Mance, and then she signed it?
Yes, sir.
Well, that don't, that don't make sense to me.
But that's where we're at.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna be, we ain't gonna be at that.
So, the.
I'm not gonna agree to pay you anything. I'm not. Now, the other two may. And if I, and I just said something about the commission never done anything illegal, if I gotta go to jail, then that's, then there's a couple of one with me.
Well.
No, I agree. I think we need to, we need to settle this. It was one allocation, we need to put it out for bids. If we, if, if we want to do three separate projects, then we put them all three out for bid, in my opinion. Or we put them back together and put them out for bid, and I'm done with it.
Yeah, I'd agree. That's, that's the only way we can do it.
Tell them to come on.
What's that?
If they want to sue about this contract, just tell them to come on.
Yeah, I have not talked to them, uh, at all. I have not.
And the, the threshold is fifteen thousand, but that doesn't mean that you don't put it out. And it's not like we do projects like this every day. So what I don't like is Mrs. Ladd being painted in the light. She's not an attorney or a contractor, and I don't want you to think that I'm thinking that, and I know that they, they aren't thinking that either. But I would just, for me to feel good and sleep at night, I agree, I think we ought to do that, and we all get a warm and fuzzy. And I don't want you to feel like we're singling you out. It's not like we do sixty thousand pro, sixty thousand dollar projects at CVB every day. I just think it would, it would be a lot better if we put them out for bid. Whether, and, and that can be to your discretion, whether we, we split them up into three separate projects, put them all three out for separate bids, or just lump them into one. That's, that's all I, that's, that's where I'm at. I definitely want to support you, and I want to do this, and I have from the beginning.
Do you know whether they've done any work since you, that you signed these in April?
As far as I know, they have not done any work, no. No.
They haven't got any money either, have they?
No, they haven't got any money, no. So they haven't done any work. Right.
No, there hasn't been any money.
And I think the first thing listed was like, was having a meeting, and there's been no meeting.
Do I hear a motion to authorize Mrs. Ladd to put these out for bid?
I'll move that the, uh, commission, uh, allow, uh, Ms. Ladd to put these, uh, proposals out for bid. Well, we can make another motion on the second part.
I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
My motion in a second to authorize Mrs. Ladd to put the, these projects out for bid, either as one or three separate projects, but out to bid. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. President, my, my other motion would be that, uh, the commission not pay Mills Group. As we are the allocators of the, uh, ARP funds, um, has to be approved by the, the county. And the, uh, the bid process would just be in addition to that. So, um, I move that we not pay Mills Group, uh, anything as it was not, uh, properly channeled through the ARP.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to deny a request for, for payment, uh, to the Mills Group. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Okay.
I'll be talking to you about that back in Georgia. Thank you.
You're gonna have to reach out to them as soon as possible.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow. Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have the, the Farm Crawl, Mrs. Ladd?
Farm Crawl, okay. Yes, I'm here to discuss the Farm Crawl, the Hampshire County Farm Crawl. A free event scheduled for July thirteenth and fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. This event takes place across multiple farms in Hampshire County and attracts both residents and visitors from surrounding regions, many of whom seek local accommodations. The Farm Crawl is not just an event, it's a vital initiative that supports local farmers and ag-related businesses and organizations, brings tourists to our area, promoting local agriculture and contributing to our economy. Events like this help sustain our local businesses and showcase the beauty of our rural landscape. Despite its benefits, the Farm Crawl doesn't receive as much support from sponsors as other events. This may be because it's spread out across multiple locations rather than gathering people in one central area. However, it does draw people into Hampshire County. Supporting our farmers is crucial, especially considering that agriculture is our primary industry. According to the USDA Census of Agriculture, from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two, Hampshire County moved from fifth to third in the state for production of crops, livestock, poultry, and products. Preserving our agricultural heritage and way of life is deeply important to our community, and agritourism is a key way to achieve this. So we are requesting one thousand dollars in sponsorship from the Hampshire County Commission. These funds will be part of our larger sponsorship efforts to cover necessary expenses for the event. This is our third year, so I do want to say we are striving to put together, um, an agritourism agricultural group who are meeting and talking together, brainstorming, you know, ways to grow agritourism in the county. With that being said, that's why we're having our first hayday competition, which is, uh, people are gonna decorate hay bales, and they're gonna get prizes for those. So we need thirteen hundred dollars for prizes for our hayday competition, which is going to feature different packages, all with local products, all coming from the farms. Four hundred dollars for portable toilet rentals, because that's been one of our complaints over the last couple of years. Uh, and then.
What do you have to put down?
The, you know what, so I need to do a map, and I need to see where there's facilities, and those portageons are gonna go wherever there is not coverage. And then six hundred dollars for essential directional and informational signage. We need more yard signs, we need some banners up, letting people know that it's happening. Folks are coming, they're getting a little, I wouldn't say they're lost, but they get a little bit turned around when they're out in the middle of the county and don't have a signal, um, even though we, you know, we encourage people to print maps and all that good stuff. Let's see. So far, we've received six hundred and fifty dollars in donations from generous community supporters, including Bank of Romney, FNB Bank, and New England Manufacturing. We could present a much larger list of wants and needs, but we are trying to maintain a conservative budget. And of course, the CVB is covering the marketing, the marketing side of everything, but portageons don't really fall under marketing. Not yet, anyway. Other options, like selling tickets to the event, have been considered and discarded because we don't want to exclude anyone from attending because they can't afford it. We want to be inclusive while still ensuring that, you know, our farms can make money. The requested items and funds may seem modest compared to other requests that come across the table to you. However, the impact on the local economy, including our farms, businesses, shops, and restaurants, is substantial. So your support for the Farm Crawl will help us host a successful event, and it will also contribute to the ongoing support of our local farmers and businesses. Thank you for considering our request. Do you have any questions? And I, I see you all.
How many days is it?
It is two days. Currently, it is two days, yes. The hay, the hayday event is actually gonna start, uh, prior to, the Farm Crawl is gonna fit right in the middle of the hayday event, so that as people are driving around, they will also see the different hay bale art. And those dates are in here. Voting will start on July third and end on July seventeenth. All of those will be put online, um, in the little guide. We have a list of all the farms that we have so far who are participating.
How many do you anticipate, Tina, that will stay at a motel or Airbnb or something like that? Like last year, in years past, did any of those people do that?
So it's been rough doing the data. I say it's been rough because I've discussed it with people, I've asked people to do it, there's really no way to enforce it. But moving into our third year and knowing where we're heading with this and that we hope to grow, I am encouraging my farms, number one, we're gonna figure out a way for them to track data, and we are gonna follow up with the hotel, motel, and the Airbnbs who we have contact with, and we're gonna ask, well, we're gonna check with them beforehand, and ask them to ask the folks that are staying with them that weekend why they're there.
Of course, that would, what I'm getting at is that apparently you don't have this in your, your CVB budget, correct? You don't have, do you have?
We have marketing available in our CVB budget, right.
But what I'm trying to get at is, is that in order to increase your hotel motel tax, we have to have those people stay in Airbnbs or hotels, South Branch, and Cool Wink or whatever. So that, that would help me.
So, right, so an event like the Farm Crawl and. So, right. So an event like the Farm Crawl and why we're trying to draw agritourism is simply because it is something that we have here currently. We have the farms here. People want to learn more about farming, they want to buy local produce, local meat. They want to meet authentic people. Apparently, and I've told a couple of people this, I didn't realize it till there have been folks here doing articles on, on the Farm Crawl. They say that it's quite remarkable that so many of our farms are generational farms. So that adds another level of authenticity to what's going on here in Hampshire County. We don't have trails, you know, we don't have ski resorts, we don't have zip lines. When we, what I'm trying to do is incorporate agritourism to be like that extra factor, that extra thing that will get people to stay here for two or three days. So they can do the train, right, they can do the river. Doing events like this is one more thing that they can do, and I also want to I'm trying to couple that with the farmers, I'm trying to also educate them and show them that they can, what they can do on their own, all summer long, all summer long.
I have no problem with it. I mean, I think, and quite frankly, as you being a director, I think I think you've done an outstanding job with this CBB since you got involved in it, and well, and the board also. I just, I'm very pleased with how that part of it goes.
Well, thank you. And I will say, you've heard it here first, but also my little group of farmers, there will be, there will also be a fall crawl this year. So we're going to
And then some of those, they can sell the products at what they have there, I guess, you know.
Yeah, when I, when we first started this, the first year that we did this, honestly, and I may have mentioned that to you all before, but all the farmers were like, count us in, because they didn't really expect, I don't think, that anything was going to happen. And then they were a little bit shocked when folks showed up, and the only complaint I heard at the end of the first day was, we need to do this for two days next year. So they're with me on this. We're trying to, we're trying to lead, my goal was to lead, for Hampshire County, to lead the state in agritourism. And I think that so far, we're doing a good job.
Mr. President, I'll move that the commission grant the thousand dollar request from the CBB towards the Hampshire County Farm Crawl. I believe it's a just investment, you know, considering all the other festivals.
Second.
My motion in a second to approve the request as presented by Director Ladd, and the sum of one thousand dollars for the Farm Crawl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Hart, well, go ahead and come up, Mr. Hart. For the public we're, we tabled.
Can we bring it back home?
Yes, please.
Mr. President, I move that we bring the bid opening back off the table.
Now, second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to bring the bid proposals off the table, or back onto the table, rather. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. What did we find out, sir?
I think I inked it out there.
Okay, thank you.
I've got on the item where E is added in, and then where it's deleted.
Okay. So our new sum would be right here, where I've circled.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Where's the other one? This is the warranty here. Someone comparing apples to apples now. Yeah, yes, yeah. Need to see it again, sir?
So in this bid, we're just, we're just going to do the A, B, C, D, and E?
I personally don't know if we could
Okay.
do both right now.
Mr. President, if I could add some
Yes, sir.
questions or discussion. I would certainly think, yeah, we should consider A, B, C, D, E portion of the, of the building, as Mr. Hart has recommended. The question I have is, you know, we're currently you know, have aggressively tried for a federal grant to work on this. It is, it is obviously a pretty good sum of money for us as a county, but would we want to put any time in there to see what happens? I know that's a sixty day, did we verify that it was sixty days?
This one I talked to, yes.
Just for discussion, gentlemen, I don't know whether, you know.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
I would certainly want to wait the sixty days, or if we could, but probably won't know anything else by then, but it is a building that gets used a tremendous amount. It's just, there's no arguing that, and it's good to have to be fixed one way or the other, but just adding that discussion in there, gentlemen, I know we're going after a grant for the entire building. But, you know, maybe we need to go ahead and do that portion now, if that's imminent.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think we could wait thirty days, just to see if we could get a decision from the Capitol. And if not, do A, B, C, D, and E through our funding sources that we already have.
I'm pumped. Do you guys want to wait?
I think, you know, if Ralph found out something for us forty-five days from now, or thirty days from now, that'd be wonderful. It would be worth the wait, but likeliness of that is, you know, here nor there, I don't know, but certainly I think we might want to
Yeah.
wait a little while.
It, tribal, use the hundred thousand for the tribal consistency, and then the other fifty-two nine-nine for general fund. Contingent upon a forty-five day waiting period to explore our other funding source.
That, that sounds reasonable to me, Commissioner.
Kenny, I've talked to Kenny a few weeks ago, and he had, the last time I had spoke to him, he had had that leak under control. But as we all know, there's a timeline on that too, so we don't want to push it, but do, and you spoke with Kenny as well?
Oh, yeah.
He has it under control currently?
As of, as of Friday.
For office forty-five days, reasonable?
You're asking me about Congress?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Okay.
By, in theory, Congress is pulled back later than one October, the new fiscal year. We do know that it's gone past Capito's office. Senator Capito approved that they should go forward to the Capitol, you know, to the appropriate subcommittees. Anybody's guess whether they will chop them up? Just so you understand, that building, I did it in two phases with the idea that if they did chop it, they would chop the second part of it, which is the the chimney, basically everything parts or used. And that was six hundred thousand. One million fifty was phase one, which was A, B, C, D, E, if I'm going on that correctly. The other thing, gentlemen, you should be aware of that, remember when we first started this road with CDS? We were looking at the EMS to get that funded, but we were already in the paying for it phase. And that was something that Senator Manchin's office came back very clearly. No, you can't pay for it, and then get a CDS, and then reimburse yourself for it. So anything that you guys spend will probably be dropped off, anything that we get.
Yeah, yeah.
What did the, what did the head say, Matthew? Other than we do the bid open tonight, is that it?
Yes.
Did we?
Well, the commission has the right to reject all bids.
I understand that part, but you gentlemen are talking about delaying, are you talking about delaying making the actual decision? Which contractor we're going to select?
For me, it's pretty clear that
I understand, me too.
Blackstone. One's twenty thousand dollars cheaper.
Yeah.
And it's for the same work.
And so, Matthew, when would we have to do the contract?
Well, if you guys, let's say you selected a contractor, and then we would just, if we wanted to hold the contract off thirty or forty-five days, and just let them know, you know, we'll start to, we'll do a contract up, whatever timeline you all decide you want to do.
Well, and I think that's, as far as I'm concerned, I think we should, we should go ahead and make the decision and select the contractor, and then inform them that it's going to be forty-five days or something before we sign the contract. Does that sound okay, or not?
I would agree with that, and I think that's reasonable.
Okay, that'll be my motion.
I have a motion and a second to accept Blackstone Roofing LLC's bid for section A, B, C, D, and E of the Capebridge Community Complex roof, contingent upon a forty-five day delay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passed.
And I think we ought to add to that.
Sorry for the confusion.
Mr. President, how much, how much that was for? Is it one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
That, Mr. Clerk, the sum would be one fifty-two nine-nine-three. Moving on here.
I have a good news for you. Your seven o'clock appointment for the Harvest Festival called and asked to delay until June eleventh, so
Okay.
it's coming tonight.
Okay.
Summer Harvest, no action. Springfield Ruatan lease.
Okay, gentlemen, when we done the, we done the canvas, I left you copies of the lease agreement with the Springfield Ruatan that Mr. Millison rolled up for us. Both of you have, gentlemen, have an opportunity to look at that?
Yes.
Yes. Is this the same, you mean you pulled up the old existing?
Well, this is, this is, the one I left in your box was this one here.
This is the original?
This is the one we, that the president has assigned. I left that in your box with the, with this stuff from Region A when we was doing the canvas.
Yes, yeah, this is the one from nineteen ninety-eight.
No, that's a new, this is a new one.
It's addressing the nineteen ninety-eight one, Commissioner, because it was a dead lease.
It's basically a lease, it's basically a lease like the have with the Augusta Ruatan for the fairgrounds, that the Springfield Ruatan can do anything they want with the buildings, except the Rescue Squad building, which comes under our control as long as we use it. And if we decide never to use it, it goes back, it goes within that lease.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, to be true, yes. Yeah, it was extended to two thousand eight, I read nineteen ninety-eight, then extended to two thousand eight. Yeah, and, you know, my goal and overarching point has always been that we provide the best EMS coverage we can to the county. I don't know if we're going to save money by having that building. I know we're paying three hundred to Springfield, but we'll now take on internet, electric, and other costs, but for the sake of facilitating care, I, I see, I see what you're saying, gentlemen. Just previously, the previous motion was to the effect of writing a letter, of which I didn't know the details, which made me a little reluctant. Did you need this, sir?
I've read over it, but again, it's for the public's concern, it's a lease that addresses to the Ruatan. The Ruatan has leased that property from the commission for many years. The, actually, in my research, considering the ambulance building down there, I brought it to the attention of all the commissioners that the lease was dead. So Commissioner Hart went down, met with the Ruatan, and and I believe Commissioner Hart, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, has been looked at by the attorney here in town and written to update a lease with the Ruatan, excluding the ambulance building, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so you know, I would, I would be in favor of that. I think obviously it fixes some of the ambulance building issues that we have right now, and allows the Ruatan to have a legal lease and continue their operations for the community.
So this was the decision of the Ruatan to?
Yeah, matter of fact, the president is, oh, here he is, I didn't see him.
Sir, how are you today?
I'm fine, thank you. Yourself?
Good, good, and you, I'm sure, read over this, and you're happy with the Ruatan's agreement with the commission?
We have approved it as a club. If you need the minutes, I can get them for you.
No, I trust you.
On the second of May, which I guess that was what the first Monday of May is, isn't it?
That's when we was, we was going to do it, but then
Well, well, we took
We had the election, then we had the, we had the canvas, and we never had another meeting. When, when
Well, we had, well, we had ours.
Your meeting on the May first, yes.
We're on board with it, and I'm authorized to sign it whenever you say to.
Okay.
Okay.
Was it unanimous agreement of the Ruatan Club?
Yes, the executive board, namely myself and Robert Haynes and Dennis Green, I guess some of you guys know. They all looked at it and said, yeah, it's in line with what it's been, and
Okay.
And they, and they recommended to the whole club that meets after the executive board, and it was unanimous that we do it.
The document's been around for a little while, so we didn't want to make one change. It's not April anymore, it'll be signed in May, so I just want to make that correction right there.
Well, you want to use that copy for signatures?
That came directly from Mr. Millison's office.
Oh, is that date? Yeah, they changed, they just changed it to May.
Is this, is this correct, eight-year?
Yeah.
In year?
Yeah, and then we, then they renewed it.
Okay, then renew it after that twenty-eighth, okay, I see. I'll move that the Hampshire I'll, I'll move that the Hampshire County Commission accept the proposed lease with the Springfield Ruatan and that we allow the commission to sign along with Mr. President Bissett, I believe, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second that the County Commission enter into renewed agreement with the Springfield Ruatan for the property there, where the, what do we, what do we call that parcel, gentlemen? Just the virgin grounds at Springfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No. All those opposed? No. Motion passed.
Which one you sign?
Yes.
Do you sign it, David?
I will. Motion passed.
Says Springfield Ruatan President. Okay, and then back to you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'll have this recorded in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
I'll stop by in the morning, get, maybe wait till like maybe 10 o'clock.
Thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for making the drive. Moving on here, Mr. Malcolm, Director Malc-
Have some buckwheats and stuff with us.
Yeah. Director Malcolm and the HCSA Springfield truck.
Evening, Commissioners, how you all seem?
Good.
Good. We brought you some statistics we want to, Ms. Freeze has been working on, on call volume since the inception of the truck down there. And just kind of want to give you all an update on where we stand.
Thank you.
In October, we started down there, and that's when that sheet starts, and you'll see at the bottom, I believe, a tally of calls we've ran. This is light compared to what actually we have ran, because that is done by geographical areas, Springfield Levels, Greenspring, and so forth. And I'll let Deputy Director Freezer cover more of it, but we expanded the Springfield territory.
So basically, to do an easy black and white search, I searched by communities for response zones. So I broke down into Greenspring, Springfield Levels, Points. So you wouldn't have a, this is going to be a little low. They will actually have a higher response each month, because split communities like Slainsville, I wasn't separately including, because that would require a literal address-by-address search. So these are pretty good, pretty good estimates with probably plus or minus, well, with plus every month, including those split response districts. They're staying consistently steady, and we haven't even finished May, and we're going to probably surpass as the summer crowd comes in. We expect our call volume to actually exponentially increase going into the summer, as it usually does in that area.
And we do have a signed MOU with the Fort Ashby Fire Rescue Squad, and they've actually come over twice, because we've been tied up on other crews, other calls with that truck down there.
And this also doesn't cover mutual aid calls that where if Romney's crew was tied up, where Springfield moving to Romney and vice versa, on back halves in Perkinsville and things like that. So I said, this is just going to be very strictly their truck and their truck alone, and really what Springfield was running before, not including what's, what it has expanded to also cover.
We did expand that truck to take pressure and save gas mileage and provide quicker care. It comes up to Landfill Road, and it also goes to Slainsville Store on Slainsville Lake. Once you put the math to it, it's actually a little better and takes some pressure off of the other trucks.
But it better, it better balances the load between the county units.
When, when do we start down there?
We start in October, October 2nd. And we went 24/7 right around, what, April 15th, April?
And I think this month we.
Mid-April, so we went 24/7 down there. So things seem to be rolling along fairly well down there.
Tell me about the truck, Mr. Malcolm.
Such as?
This was, you just came in for?
Springfield crew, I'm sorry, it should have been crew.
Okay, I was expecting a, an ambulance request or something when I seen the truck.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
We just wanted to give you an update.
All right.
We're, we're good right at the moment. We're going to be looking towards some new.
Okay.
Employment here in the coming year, but not right now. No, we wanted to give you an update, and I apologize. That was when Bethany called me, I said, well, it's Springfield truck.
Okay.
We do have a request, though, we're getting hit on, and I do not like the timing of this request. It makes it look really bad.
It's coincidence. We would actually like requests and support from you guys in finding the Springfield EMS crew a permanent station. As you guys know, right now, they are sharing the fire hall with Springfield, because Springfield graciously offered up to let us house them while we were getting set up. Really, running into summer, the fire hall's becoming really more involved with community events. They're doing, hosting a lot of events and parties, and our crews just don't have a spot of their own. They're having to share space, they don't have a quiet space to do their charting or de-stress after calls, so they can refocus on what else needs to be done. They're having to clean up over kind of big events, that isn't really fair to them. And they don't even have a place to store stuff or their own personal equipment, because they don't have any place of their own. So we would like the request tonight to find them a permanent, permanent, permanent housing solution, basically.
And I have a place in, I'm sure Commissioner Ken, you're aware of the garage there that was owned by the Cosners, Springfield Valley Paving. That was kind of the location I was considering. I don't know, I've not talked to either one of those, but it's sitting there vacant, far as I know. That's a potential possibility, but we wanted to give.
Have you guys, the only thing that I'm concerned about with a new building is if we do, you know, 24-hour shifts, needing male, female bathrooms, things of that nature, those additional costs. That's a concern. Now, we're, at Springfield Fire, where we're at now, do they have male, female bathrooms and things of that nature?
The biggest problem we got there is we have no area of, right now, they're sitting in, if any of you stop in, they're sitting in the corner of the community building. And there's been some death dinners there, just the other week there was one, and then last weekend was a birthday party. And this time of year, some of the subdivisions meet there. So last weekend, when it was a private party, the crew had to go out in the truck base, and they don't have TV, they don't have anything out there.
They don't, really, another big thing is the office situation for them to be able to do their patient care charts, because that's something that the patients have the right to, is good, solid charting. And so having their own space where they could focus on their chart would be beneficial to the community and them.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize it wasn't advantageous to Springfield, but, and those are good points. I mean, I would be in favor of reaching out to Mr. Cosner about his garage.
Well.
Talk about this, Commissioner.
Well, no, I haven't talked to anybody about that, because the reason I haven't is we got a building there. I mean, that's what, we just got to get the ambulances, get Springfield Rescue to get their ambulances out of there. They're not doing anything. They, they haven't, to my knowledge, they've been donating stuff to others, to other units, and I just can't see having them sit there when we have to, when we need a building.
Yeah, I would say, you know, we all know we have a building down there. There's several recorded leases that address the building. I've, I've brought those to the, both commissioners' attention over the past six months. However, Springfield doesn't agree that they should move out of there. A concern, back when we discussed this at the beginning of the year, was that there wasn't 24/7 coverage down there. Now there is, which, you know, Mr. Malcolm just verified that, you know, since mid-April. So that's there now. You know, two of the commissioners agreed that Springfield's was not operating appropriately. Patient care wasn't first. And to me, you know, refusing to move out of that building is, is more spite than doing anything to help the community. We have 24/7 down there now. That's, that's definitely a way to help the community down there. I, I, I don't understand the, again, from, from a true volunteer perspective, what's, what's the reason to keep that building? Again, you, I think if you look at this big picture, you start to see the spitefulness and background story to some of this that I've been trying to explain for seven years. So, you know, in response to your requests, Mr. President, I'd, if it's appropriate, according to the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we write Springfield another letter, explain that we've already asked once. Of course, they said no. You have a short period up for response. My suggestion is seven to 10 days maximum, and then the commission follow through with our legal ability to evict and get the taxpayers' building back. That would be my motion, if you will so entertain that.
Yes, sir, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, could, could we, could we set a date, just like Jan, or June 15th?
Oh, Mr. Clerk, would you like seven days or 10 days, gentlemen?
10, I'd like 10 days.
10 days, Mr. Clerk, from the next business, 10 business days from, I guess, tomorrow morning, for them to respond.
Okay.
Just for a little bit of further discussion, you second the motion? I have a motion and a second for a little further discussion. That board had reached out and requests that they be allowed to do first aid classes if we take over the building. That would be something you gentlemen would entertain.
Who's that now, David?
Springfield Rescue requested to, to, if we take over the building, that they still be allowed to do first aid classes to help the community out of that building.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that, but.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I, it's to help out the whole community. This is not just individuals, this is the community. And I mean, we have instructors to help teach the classes. All of our classes are open to the public, so we can do them there, wherever, she can do them there, I don't care.
Okay.
Yes.
Definitely, gentlemen, I would, you know.
Best interest of the community.
Entertain any kind of, you know, volunteerism there as, as far as making things work. I mean, that's, that's truly what it's all about here. It's, it's not, you know, protecting a, a certain entity.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I, I thought it was advantageous to everybody where we were at, until you guys explained that, which I'm sorry for my ignorance.
It was a great starting point, but with it becoming a permanent thing, we need to look.
Okay.
They just have no privacy.
And one thing that Commissioner Aglenger's always said that I've never wanted to, to, you know, go against, and, and, you know, there's no defense for it, is there's no reason that the volunteers from anywhere in the county couldn't volunteer for us.
We have an EMS reserve program.
I hope that we expand on that.
Anybody who's willing and wants to join can join as an EMS reserve. All we require is to make sure we have coordinated channels, has a copy of all your latest updates and certifications. We have five right now that are EMS reserves. They don't get paid a nickel. Three of them are paramedics that help out the county.
Mr. President, let's go ahead and vote on that, then we can, we can talk to him about.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passed.
And I think, David, we talked about, talking a tad about that crisis in about $18,000. Didn't you tell me that you was working on a crisis response team?
Yes. We've talked to Dr. Middleton and Ken Middleton, which is, goes all over the state, and he works for.
Homeland Security.
Yeah, he works for.
He's their traffic, one of, part of their trafficking team.
He's the one that goes down to the border a lot and does a lot of critical incident and stress management. He's a renowned instructor, and we've talked to him about coming to Hampshire County, putting on the classes that'll be open to everybody. And once we get it tied down more, then I figure we'll come to you and make a request for funding out of that money. But this is classes open to all fire EMS and law enforcement.
And dispatch.
And dispatch. Now, he has suggested that some of the law enforcement ones be done separately, because law deals with a little bit of different critical incident, stress management than firing EMS does. So dispatch and law may have their own classes. But yes, it's something that's really needed. I mean, years of wear and tear on you really start taking toll on people.
Commissioner, we had also spoke about the $18,000, we were going to, were you aware of the $18,000 out of the salary enhancement funds for the mental health?
That's it.
That's what I told him.
Okay, now I'm connecting the dots, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Good.
Are you going to see him anytime soon, maybe?
I can make sure I do see him.
I just need his signature on that. Because I saw him in the other day, and I didn't have a form.
For now, one, yes, sir. But yes, I'll, we'll be bringing information back to you on that. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Martin.
Hey, how are you?
Good, I just haven't signed a sheet for her.
Been busy?
Yes, too busy. We're just like everybody else, overworked and understaffed. Okay, so I'm not sure if the audit actually got issued today or not. I know Eric got the management representation letter back to us over the weekend. So I think the audit actually got issued today. Did you?
I didn't see it, but she, no, she got the letter yesterday.
Okay, I know it has, they have to go in and do a few things, and then Samantha, our director, actually has to sign off on it. They print stuff out, and then she has to sign off, so I don't know. I was going to check before I came in, I forgot until I got here, and then I was like, ah, I forgot to check. But the fiscal, I'm here to do the exit conference for the fiscal year '22, which would be July 1st of 2021 to June 30th of 2022. So I audited the governmental activities, the aggregate discretely presented component units, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Hampshire County for fiscal year 2022, and the related notes to the financial statement. My opinion on the financial statements was unmodified for all of those things. We actually did get the audit report for Farmland Protection Board like last week, two weeks ago, I guess. That was the one that was, had been causing the modified opinion in the past couple of years, but they've, I think, got all their audits all caught up now. And starting in fiscal year '24, I'm going to actually start doing Farmland Protection Board under the same cover with the county, like I do Parks and Recreation. So hopefully, going forward, we won't have any issues. Like I said, I did audit Parks and Rec. We didn't audit Farmland Protection Board, the Board of Health, or the Development Authority, and our opinion is based solely on the report of those other auditors, which they all had unmodified opinions and actually no findings. I did have a couple findings on the county. One of them is a repeat finding, and it's the county clerk trial balances, which I know they're working on. I talked to Bethany a couple of weeks ago, and she was just waiting on the vendor to get back to her, to help her put journal entries in, to get them all...
Make progress on that.
Yeah. Mr. Hesse called me, too, and after I sent the audit adjustments to him, and he had told me first that he had them updated through September, but they were waiting on getting help to actually get them put into the system. So hopefully, once the software support helps her put in those journal entries, then all the trial balances will all be up to date, and we won't have any issues going forward. The other finding that I had for this year was a failure to submit a budget revision to appropriate the unexpendited fund balance for coal severance tax fund. And that just means that the ending balance at June 30th of 2021 was not properly put into the budget for fiscal year '22. And I'm not really sure, I couldn't figure out why it didn't. I looked at '21, it was fine, and then I looked at fiscal year '23, and it's fine. So I'm not sure what happened in '22. It must have just been an oversight. In 2021, I had a finding for expenditures in excess of amounts allocated in the general county fund, but that one was actually corrected for '22. I didn't have that problem anymore. I did already have audit adjustments were approved. I went over them with Bethany, and she approved them. And then by request of the county clerk, I provided the adjustments to the financial statement preparer, and so he can make all the adjustments into his financial statements going forward. And most of them were to blend the building commission and the county commission together because by auditing standards, if the building commission only does activity for the county, then you present it as a fund and not a separate entity. So most of the adjustments that I had to make was to combine those two together and to unearned the American Rescue Plan grant monies that had not been spent yet. Because you got that money in advance, we show it as unearned until it's actually spent. And then, once it's spent, then we show it as revenue. So that was really the two main adjustments that I had to make to the county. So I don't have anything else. I know that was a lot of information I'm throwing at you all at once.
You used to do the building commission separate, you say? Was, did that happen, did that happen when we had the embezzlement there? Didn't we do that?
Yeah, I actually audit the building commission under the same cover, and because their records are held by the CPA, the county actually gets like a financial statement from them, and then they have to like combine it. And it's just hasn't been combined correctly. But we started doing the audit when the embezzlement happened, but it's just a Gatsby standard that we actually have to combine them.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah. And so, because they're a separate entity, and like they actually do their own work, so when they write a check from the county clerk's office to make the lease payment, they write it out to the building commission, and it becomes an expenditure for the county. And then down there, they show it as a revenue. But when I combine them all together, that would overstate my revenues and my expenditures, so I have to like show them as transfers. And we just haven't quite got that whole process worked out on the financial statement yet. But I think it's getting there. It was just Fred wasn't aware of exactly what was happening with it, so he was just using the county's records and not combining it, but...
Could you, could you do the development authority?
Um...
What do we have to do? Because I know they, I know theirs is quite expensive where they do it. I just wondered...
Yeah, I don't do any development authorities under the same cover. Is that what you're asking, about under the same cover?
Yeah.
I don't do any under the same cover. It's, it would be the same thing that I told Farmland, you would have to reach out to our office and see what they say.
Okay.
Because that would be a decision that would be made by, like, our director and assistant, associate directors. It's not...
Would it save us any money?
That I can't answer either. I don't know. That would be questions that you could address to them. I can give you, if you don't have their contact information, I can give it to your, Eric, I'm sure has it.
Give it to Commissioner Cannon. He sits on there. And the only reason I was bringing that up, because I sit on the Farmland Protection Board. And we used to do theirs, and then we somehow we got it separated, so now we got back to you.
Yes.
And I thought, well, maybe we could save money if we let, and their director, by mandate, sits on the Farmland Protection Board, JTI. So I thought maybe, I just wanted to throw that out and see what you see.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you the information to contact, and you, that would be something that you'd have to take to our office to ask about. Farmland is pretty easy to combine because the revenue is collected by the county clerk. So when we do the audit of the county clerk's office, we've already done a lot of the audit process for the Farmland Protection Board. So it makes it really easy to put it under the same cover.
Okay, I understand.
So I don't know about the development authority, because that, we don't really do anything county side that would help in the audit procedures there. But, but sure, I'll make sure you get the information to contact.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions, comments?
I don't, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want, we wanted a motion to approve the auditor's exit, '21, '22? That help you? That's my motion.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the auditor's exit conference as it is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right, and I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for all the help. All the employees are always very helpful. I always get everything I need. When I ask for it, I never have to bug anybody, hopefully, and so it's much appreciated. You have a good group of employees.
You need our signatures.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I have to say, you're probably the most bubbly, sweet auditor I've ever been around. Normally, you're all mean and demanding. No, I'm just kidding. But no, thank you. Very meticulous.
Yeah, thank you. I have learned that the old adage is true about you catch more...
Oh, you're telling us your tricks?
Lies, whatever, yeah.
No, you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Hart, Security System Upgrade Judicial Center.
I think Sheriff Sides wanted to go into executive session on this.
Yes, under contractual.
Mr. President, I'm going to executive session.
I have a motion to go into executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session under the contractual subsection of the West Virginia Code. As the president will allow that in executive session. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.[1085.66]
You'll be okay.
Except for...
It will all work out.
A little green bottle, Matthew.
We're live, sir. We're now out of executive session. No action taken. No motions were made.
Mr. President, I move that the Hampshire County Commission approve the request from the sheriff's office to allocate $27,000 for the Judicial Center camera project.
I'll second that motion, and I'll add that the work to be done is security work, so therefore it would not need to be bitted at this time.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bid as presented for the emergency security work at the Judicial Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. We move it on to the Penn Oak, CEO Penn Oak Fountain Repair.
I like all you all with that up there. All we have, if you bear with me, Mr. Cannon has the... What, since I live in a suburb of Penn Oak, the folks over there, since we did the fountain repair a year and a half ago, this request came, if we could, if the commission would be interested in providing some stone and whatever to fix the potholes and stone around the fountain.
Yeah, I think that that's a...
I've got an estimate, a tandem load of crusher-run stone is roughly $700. And with the potholes that you see, probably take a ton truck load of some fine shale to fill the potholes before it's stoned over top. The second pick, and the stone around it, and Mr. Combs, Larry, he'll take care of spreading the stone around with his tractor. So I would say we'd be looking in the neighborhood of, I would say around $900 for the shale hauled and put down in the stone.
It's one of our landmarks. I think we ought to take care of it, so I'm in favor.
By the way, you guys allocate $1,500 annually for that thing, and we're not using that.
Okay, okay.
Well, I would move that the commission pull from the allocation, annually $1,500, put that towards what is needed for the stone that Mr. Hott speaks of.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the repairs to the parking lot as presented by Mr. Hott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Thank you all.
Maintenance, Mr. Clerk?
Oh, yeah. First things, the pages for the tax books that you guys approved the tax, in the books, these are the formal pages in the back. There's seven pages there. We need your signature on each other, but again, no action taken on that.
Only the, you don't need all of them signed?
Yes, we do need all of them signed.
I just had that many stickers.
Okay.
I just know where to start looking.
These are the delinquent tax lists. We'll need to get those approved. They're all three the same, so after you approve the list, I sign those.
Mr. President, I move we approve the delinquent tax list that was presented by the sheriff.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the delinquent tax list as presented by the sheriff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
You have certified the election, too, don't you?
Either one of you guys want a judicial contract?
I had one. Do you have one?
Just, nah, he only brought us that one. Just gives a list of all the repairs to be made.
Survivor results of the elections on the last page. And the last county approved theirs on Friday afternoon, or the 48 hours to embark on Friday afternoon, which will be tonight. It's late Friday.
Trump can't believe I'd got 400 votes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the exoneration as presented by the assessor.
I'll second the motion. A motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the exoneration as presented by the tax assessor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And, Mr. President, I would move that the three ambulance exemptions, one to deny and two to approve, that we do as recommended from HCSA on those.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the exemptions and denial as presented by the HCSA. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Do I? Yeah. Okay. Do you get motion on the questions or... Mr. President, I move that the Hampshire County Commission sitting as the Board of Cameriers certify the primary election, May 14, 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second that the county commissioner sitting as Board of Cameriers approve the, and certify the primary election as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Getting tired, Darren. Huh? I almost read that one today, said one guy.
It's better than two, six, eight. You know what I mean? Like we had before, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I almost got a letter done. How do you want to sign it? Where you want to sign it? How do you want to do that?
What's that?
A letter that just...
I'm fine with signing it, or I'm fine with David signing it, whichever he prefers.
I guess that'll be it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Clerk of the Commissioners.
Mr. President, I move that Hampshire County Commission approve all probate orders, fiduciary appointments, and qualifications, and all fiduciary bonds coming before the clerk and the vacation of the commission since its last regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and I will attempt to repeat that real quick. I have a motion and a second that the commission approve all probate orders, fiduciary appointments, and qualifications, and all fiduciary bonds coming before the clerk and the vacation of the commission since its last regular meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Thank you, gentlemen.
Official budget revision number five for the general fund. This is where you think we're at.
Mr. President, I move the Hampshire County Commission resolve that the subject to approval of the state auditor is ex officio chief inspector of public offices. The county commission does hereby direct the budget be revised prior to the expenditure or obligation of funds which no appropriation or insufficient appropriation currently exist, as shown on the budget revision number five, a copy which is entered as part of this record.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion pass.
Want us to circle this, yes and stuff, or not?
Yeah.
I've looked at the invoices. You guys looked at them yet?
Yeah, I've looked at them.
Okay, that's good.
I haven't found anything.
Mr. President, I move that the invoices be paid as presented.
Second to motion.
I have a motion and a second that the invoices be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion pass.
I went over twice while you and Brian was talking.
Gentlemen, that's all the info I have.
You ready to go home?
Yeah. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion.